Praise to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. Play ball. Tonight our invocation will be given by Pastor Jamal Brown from the United Church of Christ. And Pastor, what do we need today? Or what do we need tonight? Or what do we need tomorrow?
(inaudible).
(laughing). They knew you were coming.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Y'all can do better than that. We're gonna be in church today. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Pastor.
Amen. 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 We're gonna have the invocation, but before we have the invocation, I know we're all here. We're in the season of miracles for those of the Christian faith and many other faiths, but it's a season of giving. And I want everybody to look to the left. Look at the person to your left.
The other left.
Look to the other person to your right. So that means you'll go to both shoulders. Let's look.[79.61][79.61](laughing). I ask you to do that because what I believe is God gave a gift. He gave the gift of His own Son. And the person that you look to your left and the person that you look to your right, He loves that person. He calls each of us to do the same thing because God is love. Now, we're in a world right now where it seems like there's just a whole lot of mayhem, mischief, and folks just doing each other love, each other wrong. But I believe God calls all of us to choose for ourselves, and I believe the one thing everybody wants is to be loved. Can I get an amen to that?
Amen.
So even in this setting, church setting, family setting, whatever, love is the key word. And He gave it with the greatest symbol that I know given to humanity. And I'm gonna share that real quick, then I'm gonna get the benediction, get out your way. Or not the benediction, but the invocation.
You wanna stay around?
Invitation.
You can stay.
And get out your way.
You can stay.
And invocation, and get out your way. But the greatest symbol I know is the cross. The reason why it's the greatest symbol is because it was the re-attachment or reaffirmation, if you will, or however you want to classify it, of a love relationship. First, the vertical is between us and God. But then there's our part. It's the relationship between one another. You cannot say you love God yet hate your brother and sister that you see. It's not possible. God calls us to love each other, to treat each other with decency, love, and respect. And He calls us to choose to do that. And we all are gonna have to give an account to that, all of us, no matter what position you have, no matter how many degrees you have, no matter how rich or poor you are, we all gonna have to give an account to that. And the one seed He's gonna want and require is, did you love? And there will be no excuse, the reason why you didn't, that He will accept. Love is the answer that we need. Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for all that you've done, and we thank you for your marvelous example that you gave your only-bargotten son because you loved us. Father, in our delineation of government, help us to make every decision based upon your example of love. Blessed now, we need your presence, your wisdom, and most of all, your love within the hearts of all your people here, and we give you thanks. Be in this presence in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Love you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item 4, adjustment approval, December 5, 2017, meeting agenda, mayor pro tem.
Motion to adopt the December 5, 2017, meeting agenda with no changes.
Second.
Motion been made in second overall favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number 5 is the public comment period. We'll open a public comment period, and first up is Tim Sack. There you are. Welcome aboard. Just for the record, you know the story.
Tim Sack, for the record, 232 Elam Street, Holly Springs, North Carolina. Just a few words. Had to write them down, though. After every election for the past 20 years, the big issues have always been growth and traffic. By way of thanking Councilman Hank Dixon and Jimmy Cobb for the great job they have done, I would like to put where we are today in some context for those of our citizens who were recently moved to our town. I'm gonna turn this way. Twenty years ago tonight, Councilman Hank Dixon and myself were sworn in as council here for the town of Holly Springs, along with Ham Wambu, who's in the back right now. Twenty years ago, Holly Springs was already the fastest-growing town in Wake County. Highway 55, Main Street, running through downtown, handled all of the traffic coming through, going to RTP. There was no 55 bypass. The police department was in a cinder block building, and the Public Works Department consisted of Luncie McNeil and a few other workers. The traffic on 55 passed a converted appliance store that was our town hall. Holly Springs had no schools. Our students were bused to Apex and Fuquay Varina. Holly Springs had no grocery store. Holly Springs had a volunteer fire department and an old station on Avon Ferry Road. Holly Springs had a newly-formed police force consisting largely of Chief Cecil Parker and John Herring, who's still in the back. Holly Springs had no library, had no cultural center. Holly Springs had the Hunt Center and an old schoolhouse that Wake County no longer wanted. Holly Springs had a Wambul Park, which consisted largely of a sloping, grass-strewn field. Bass Lake was a privately-owned mudhole after Hurricane Fran wiped out the dam. The intersection of Holly Springs Road and Sunset Lake Road was a dark corner with a gas station with a bad reputation. The town had a handful of businesses and a small Chamber of Commerce. Holly Springs was at the mercy of other towns for water. Our water supply was bought from Raleigh by way of a pipe from Cary and Apex down Highway 55. It was almost shut off during a drought in the late '90s. Seems pretty grim, right? Who would want to live in a place like that? Well, here we are today, 20 years later, from about 2,000 people to 35,000 people. The town made a plan for its future. The town hired a professional town manager, highly qualified department heads, and many skilled staff members. Highway 55 bypass was planned and built to handle traffic before the towns of Apex and Fuquay Varina even realized there was a problem. The town worked with Wake County to partner to build a library and cultural center on a small park property in downtown. By donating the property, the town jumped to the top of the list and got a new library, and the town became a good partner with Wake County. The first school was built in Holly Springs on Holly Springs Road, and many more were needed. The town worked with Wake County again to show the town's willingness to be a priority by putting together the land on Holly Springs Road, where Holly Ridge Elementary and Holly Springs Middle Schools now sit. Commissioner Ham Wambul worked with the landowners and put together over 300 signatures on deeds to put that land together. Now we have eight schools, including a high school. The town took a chance and bought its own capacity in the water plant in Lillington on the Cape Fear River. The town passed a bond issue to build its own 18-mile pipeline to bring the water up from the Cape Fear. The town is not dependent on Raleigh and Falls Lake watershed for its water. The town designed and built a town hall that we now sit in. The town has a professional fire department and police department that makes Holly Springs the safest town in North Carolina. The town bought Bass Lake, built a dam, and made a public facility that we all now enjoy. The town passed a bond issue to buy parkland to build the state of the park facilities at Wambul Park, Ting Park, and acquire the Sug Farm property. The town has also built a new Hunt Center that we all now enjoy. For over seven years, the town also actively sought a new hospital that will finally be built by Rex in 2020, hopefully. The commercial businesses have also thrived, and the industrial park has grown by millions. The Chamber of Commerce now has over 300 active members.
If that's how much time you want, keep going. Sorry.
So here I am to say thank you to Councilman Hank Dixon and Jimmy Cobb for being a part of the wonderful growth of this town as enjoyed. I also want to encourage the new town council to continue on what the previous town councils have accomplished in building a great town of Holly Springs. Thank you for your time.[637.79][637.79](applause).
Do you have a copy of that speech? I'd like to keep that. Done very well. Thank you very much. Oops. And now, Ham Wambul. You're up next, partner. He already told me what he's gonna say. I like his idea, just so you know. Name an address, because nobody knows you.
I am Paris Ham Wambul, Holly Springs, 114 West Hickory Avenue, in the big town of Holly Springs. I'd like to echo what Tim had just said, 20 years ago. It was that way. Was even worse, because I was here before then. But I just wanted to ask the commissioners reference. I had seen this before, driving all the crosswalks for the pedestrians, there are no lights. So the night I came to talk about it, and almost got ran over myself crossing the wall with no light. I would hope there would be some way that we could put a light out there so when it gets dark, it would come on, and the drivers could see the pedestrians when they're trying to cross. And that's what I would like to see before someone gets run over with it. So, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ham. Good point. We like that idea.[753.19][753.19](applause). Okay, now we'll close the public hearing and go to item 6A, request communication, Holly Springs Winter Farmers Market Battle of the Badges Chili Cook-Off, one of the longest presentations right there we've ever made. And this is Jessica Stalas. Hi, Jessica.
How are you?
Good. I won't tell them your nickname.
I'll stand over here, because last month I noticed that you can only see my forehead while you're so long. So, can you see me? So on November 4, we had our very first Battle of the Badges Chili Cook-Off between the Holly Springs Police and Holly Springs Fire Departments. And I am here tonight to award the highly coveted Silver Ladle Award to the police department, or to the fire department, I'm sorry.[808.01][808.01](audience cheering).
No, John. Not this time.
Chief, do you want to come on up and introduce yourselves?
Does that mean the fire department won?
The fire department won. The police were fantastic, though, and Officer Jamie Clark was out there, and he did his very best, and it was very close, but the police, the fire department pulled it out, so.
Thank you. Just for those of you who don't know, we did two chilis. My job was taster. Keith and Mike in the back, I'd ask them to come up, firefighter Keith Bowen and firefighter Michael Glazias. They're the two chefs behind the chili that we did. We did run into one little problem, the hot chili. We thought we might have killed one of the councilmen.[859.73][859.73](laughing). Poor Hank, I thought we were gonna have to do the Heimlich on him or squirt him down with the fire hose. It was hot, wasn't it?
It was.
It was hot.
Turned his hair gray, too.
But yeah, it was a blast. We had a good time, made a lot of good contacts out there. Very positive. We're looking forward to doing it again. The best part was the video, though. I don't know if y'all saw that video. That was, that was great. Tamara did an excellent job putting a little advertising video. Me and Officer Clark had some fun messing with each other before the competition. It was all in good fun. Whatever money we raised went to two good causes, and look forward to beating the police next year. The only problem is, is if... Chief, is it true that y'all gonna do a doughnut chili next year?
Oh.
I had to get a little bit back, because the news media, the newspaper posted that the police won.
I saw that.
I think the chief had a little something to do with that.[920.43][920.43](laughing). Anyway, thank you.
Congratulations.
You guys.[926.82][926.82](applause).
You can see we're all full-figured men. We don't miss any meals.
Full-figured men.
Lots of chili.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to next year, as the gauntlet is now laid down.[949.13][949.13](laughing).
When you said doughnuts, I saw the chief touch a particular instrument in his... Well, never mind. Let me put it back. Item 6B, request communication, annual audit report for FY21617. Phyllis Pearson, good to see you back. We all have books.
Y'all have the books, and I'm gonna summarize the books.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. We conducted the audit of the financial statements of the town. Your management's responsibilities is to prepare and present fairly the financial statements of the town in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls sufficient to ensure the financial statements are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. We take the underlying documentation for the financial statements, your accounting records, and through various testing means, we determine whether or not there's sufficient evidence to support the audit opinion. When we reach that point, we express an opinion on the financial statements. Our audit is conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. We have to find reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and we have to verify the amounts in the statements, as well as the disclosures. And most of our testing is based on risk assessment of whether or not material misstatement occurs. Once we believe that we are at a point where the audit risk is reduced to low, we render the opinion. The town received an unmodified report on the financial statements, which means that the financial statements were in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles as it applies to governments, and the financial statements were materially fairly stated. We did not render an opinion on management's discussion and analysis, the introductory section, certain schedules required by the gas be related to pension plans, and the statistical section that will be in the CAFRA. We don't do sufficient testing, and the profession prohibits us from rendering opinions on those documents. We did, however, render an unmodified opinion on the supplementary information, which is your tax schedules and your budget to actual schedules. We issued an unmodified opinion under government auditing standards in the yellow book portion of the audit when we look at your certain compliance testing, where we verify that you comply with the terms and conditions of contracts, laws, regulations, and things of that matter, as well as your internal control over financial reporting. We issued an unmodified opinion on your compliance with the federal program requirements for the highway planning and construction program. That was the item that was over $750,000 that we selected for testing when your federal expenditures. And then we did that under the state requirements for the POW bill and the highway planning and construction piece that the state funded. Those were all unmodified opinions. There were no findings, no significant deficiencies, and no noncompliance that would be required to be reported to the state or the federal agencies. Your government-wide financial statements, your total assets were $162 million in 2017, $150 million in 2016. Your total liabilities were $52 million in 17, and they were $52 million in 2016. The primary reason there's not much of a change is in 2017, the implementation of law enforcement officer pension plan standards occurred, and that increased your liabilities. And as we've spoken before, as time goes on over the next, I think there's two years remaining, as we implement the new standards for post-employment benefits, your liabilities are likely to increase as a result. The total equity in the government-wide financial statements was $111 million in 2017, $100 million in 2016. Total revenues, $43 million and $38 million in 2016. Total expenses, $33 million in 17, $29 million in 2016. The change in net position was $11 million. In your governmental funds, the total assets was $28.5 million in 17, $24 million in 2016. Total liabilities, $4.5 million in 2017, $2.2 million in 2016. Total fund balances were $24 million in 2017, $22 million in 2016. Total revenues were $42 million, $37 million in 2016. Total expenses, $40 million in 2016. That number was $38 million. In your enterprise funds, the total assets were $148 million in 2017, $141 million in 2016. Total liabilities, $45 million in 17, $48 million in 2016. Total equity, $103 million, and that number was $93 million in 2016. Total operating revenues were $13.4 million in 2016, $12.2. Operating expenses were $12.9 million, and they were also $12.9 million in 2016. The change in net position was $9.6 million. The fund balance is in net position. The general fund has a total fund balance of $13.1 million. Non expendable fund balance is $79,000 restricted, which is donor or other external parties' restrictions, $5.7 million. And then the unassigned fund balance is $7.3 million. That meets the local government commission's recommendation that unassigned fund balance be greater than 8% of expenditures. Unrestricted fund balance in the enterprise funds was $37.5 million. Your legal debt margin was $278 million. Total long-term debt decreased $6.1 million. There were no new borrowings in 2017. The debt coverage ratio for revenue bonds was 574%, and the town met the other covenants of the bond agreements as well. And similar towns range in their meeting their compliance, their compliance or covenant requirements of 100% to 260%, so you more than exceed the expectation. The debt-to-asset ratio is .30, and it's important to note that the debt in the financial statements, a little over $1 million, is attributable to compensated absences, or PTO, and $8.7 million of the debt is attributable to the employee benefit plans. Your bond rating with standards and pores is AA+, which is a very strong credit worthiness, and that differs from other obligators in a slight degree. Your bond rating is AA2, with Moody's Rating Services, and with the North Carolina Municipal Council, the town rating is an 83, which is comparable to an A+/A1 with national rating agencies. The upgrades in rates are a factor of growth patterns, increased revenue patterns, and continued financial statements, stability. So the reason you have such high bond ratings is the credit worthiness, if you will, of the town, and the way you're handling your debt, and the way your assets are increasing, and you're controlling your liabilities. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. There were no changes in accounting principles, other than the implementation of the law enforcement officer pension requirements. Your major estimates are, of course, allowances for bad debts, functional expenses, and depreciation expense, and all estimates are subject to change over time because most of them are based on usage, and as your usage changes, your, the amount of the estimate changes. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. It was submitted timely to the local government commission. They approved the audit report on November 17, which was excellent turnaround. It took about two weeks to get the review completed. They had no changes to the report, which we're very pleased about. And we had just a pleasant time doing the audit, and it went well, though it is a large, complex audit. Okay, any questions?
Questions or comments of Ms. Pearson? Everybody okay?
So, for the, for the, you said that there's an, you gave us an unmodified opinion on pretty much every account.
Right.
That, every set of funds that you reviewed. Explain that to the, to the layman in terms of, for those of us who are CPAs, we understand what unmodified means, but for the average person, what does that mean?
Okay. An unmodified opinion means that we did not find the financial statements to have significant errors in them as they were prepared and presented to us. The degree of error was not large, and the audit risk was low. It's a clean opinion, if you will. That's the thing, that's the easiest thing to understand.
That was the terminology I was looking for.
As, or as one of my school clients, the headmaster says, "It's an A."
You don't want any exciting or dynamic words. You want things that are pretty stale.
Pretty, we, we'd like you to be consistent and stale. Yes.
So to summarize it up, we, we've got a clean opinion, set of books. We did, we did pretty good last year.
You did pretty good last year.
Other comments or questions?
Nope.
All good? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Phyllis, thank you so much.
And motion. Appreciate it. Motion?
Motion to accept the audit report and management letter of the town's financial statements.
Motion been made in second overall favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
See you next year. Item 7A, consent agenda, mayor pro tem.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion been made in second overall favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 8A, organizational meeting, recognition of retiring councilmembers Jimmy Cobb and Hank Dixon, Joni Powell. Hi, Joni.
You can do it.
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
What do you want me to do?
Just read over the notes. Where's the move of Jimmy Cobb?
Well, the terms of Councilman Hank Dixon and Jimmy Cobb will expire at the first meeting in December. That would be here, today, and they will retire from the Holly Springs Town Council. Councilman Dixon served the community first as a member of the town council from 1997, you were five years old, to 2009. In 2013, he won his latest term on the council. During his leadership, the town council developed a comprehensive plan for growth and development, and then continued to remaster and refine that plan as the town circumstances changed over time. Council Dixon invested efforts into numerous projects to provide critical transportation improvements for the town, abundant water and sewer capacity for the future, to attack vital non-residential development of the community, and to provide for the parks, recreation, and leisure facets of a high-quality life in Holly Springs. And there's somebody else. Oh, yeah. Councilman Cobb has served on the town council since 2009. He wore the leadership mantle well, but he was equally comfortable in the background wearing a scary costume. Now, I didn't write this, but you know what I'm talking about.[1726.26][1726.26](laughing). Which was the Grinch. I'll just give you a hint. And belting out a wicked laugh, which he's doing now, as a player in the haunted hayride project. As the Grinch, he helped direct the flow of entries exiting the Christmas parade, and he worked behind the scenes to put up directional signs and parade numbers so entries could find their space on the parade. As a CPA, Councilman Cobb served a number of nonprofit groups in town with the services of a financial officer. Both Hank and Jimmy were there to serve, whether it was to pick up garbage along the highway, to talk to neighbors and friends in support of a water or a parks bond, or to walk in marches to raise awareness of Wake County landfill, I remember that, or Martin Luther King Jr. Holly Springs is a better place than it was in 2009 and better than it was in 2013, and that is the highest compliment you can pay to an elected government official leaving office. Councilman Dixon and Cobb will be presented a few mementos as they depart office. Before we do that, I would like to offer them a chance to speak. Jimmy, you want to start?
You want to do yours first, I?
Or do you want to go first?
You can go.
You can go, all right, I don't.
Whatever's easier. Who's the oldest?
He is.
Then you go first.
I'm the oldest?
Ah, gracious. Then you get to go first.
Okay.
And you don't have to stay within three minutes.
Really?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to share with y'all a story. While I was listening to NPR the other evening on my drive home, I heard a story about a young man named Anthony Sinuccia. It's hard for me to pronounce, I'm a southern boy, it just doesn't flow off my tongue. Junior, he was a junior, and he's from Pelham, New York. Most of y'all probably have no idea who he is. But you might know him better as the man who was the inspiration to the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge. Anthony passed away on November 25th at the age of 46 after a 14-year battle with ALS. Myself having a parent who died from ALS, this brings this story home to me. In a statement that was prepared by Anthony for his funeral, he remarked that "It's not what you take from life, it's what you give back that defines you." I was struck by that statement. It's such a simple statement, but it's one that if we all tried to live by, just imagine what we could do. Each of us should strive in every aspect of our daily lives to give back in every way that we can. We all can make a difference here in Holly Springs. We just have to set our mind to it and just do it. What a bright future we could all have if that was, if we did that. I've had the honor and the privilege to serve the citizens of Holly Springs these past 20 years, not only on town council, but on various other boards that I've been appointed to. I've had the opportunity to give back to my community and hopefully to make this a better place, a place that we're all proud to call home. Thank you for that honor, and thank you for letting me be your town councilman.
Mr. Dixon?
I have some prepared remarks as well. But at first, I would like to, I'd like to thank you, Tim Sack. You know, we had our clashes over the years, but I think it was definitely because we each had a passion for this town. It was because we felt we were doing the best thing for all the citizens in town, in the town of Holly Springs. So I really appreciate you, and I really respect you, so thank you. A lot's been achieved here in Holly Springs over the past two decades, and thank you for letting me be a part of this success we've experienced over those years. We went from an afterthought in Wake County to a very respected town in the region and in the state. This was no accident. We knew our potential. We pursued it, and we accomplished a lot. We accomplished so much in such a short period of time that Holly Springs became the premier place for many to raise a family, retire, and a host of other accolades. If you did your research before moving here, you knew you were coming to a growing, very dynamic place. As a representative of the town, I welcomed you with open arms and wanted to share my positive experience with you. For 16 years, I've enjoyed serving this town. Many feel that this could be a thankless job. I never felt that way. It is a very satisfying job. It is also very satisfying to know that the flu vaccine I received was made by my neighbors right here in Holly Springs. It's also very satisfying and exciting to know that future MLB and MLS stars could be playing right here in Ting Park. And again, I'm exceedingly proud of this facility. We are able to take a potential landfill borrowed dirt area and turn it into a world-class facility. I moved here before there was a grocery store, before a hardware store, before a sit-down restaurant, before a fast-food restaurant, before most sidewalks, before all of our roads being paved, before pristine fields and parks, and so much more. It's very satisfying to see all the progress which brought so many here. These are just a few things. So in my, in my opinion, if any elected official calls serving the people of Holly Springs a thankless job, then it's time for them to move on. It's not a job, this is a privilege. So thank you to the people of Holly Springs who've joined us here in Holly Springs as residents, as well as business owners. In my prior farewell address eight years ago, I thanked and recognized a number of outstanding elected officials I served with. These were people who have each served ethically and with strength and fortitude. They've creatively shared their opinions or cast vote on, cast votes on issues which were solid decisions for the town, although politically unpopular. I would like to extend my thanks and recognize Mayor Dick Sears, Councilman Jimmy Cobb, and Councilwoman Sherri Lee, who I have served this entire term with from 2013 to 2017. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Chuck Simmons, Daniel Weeks, Joni Powell, John Chifano, and our entire town staff. Not only are they all dedicated, smart, and capable, but they have been a great resource for me for a long time. It's been particularly satisfying to see numerous staff members earn promotions over the years. I'd like to note just a few people as examples. Since there have been so many, I apologize to any employees that I'm not mentioning, but I'll mention a few. Jay Bruner, from police officer to captain. Wayne Wilhelm, from public works technician to assistant public works director. Jim Kanata, from parks maintenance tech to park, parks maintenance superintendent. Kristen Denton, from customer service rep to hunt center manager. And Daniel Weeks, from college intern to assistant town manager. I would also, again, like to thank the town staff for their kindness expressed to me and my family when my father passed away three years ago. Some unsolicited words of advice to the newly-elected council members. First, you have a lot to learn, and you will never know it all. You have lots of resources here in town hall. You need to respect, use, and trust them. Second, you must have thick skin. If you don't now, grow some, because you're now wearing a target. Get ready, it only starts in a few minutes. Third, we as citizens want facts. Don't sugarcoat or omit information just to send a popular message to avoid criticism. Fourth, if you do your job properly, you will lose some friends and supporters. Expect this to happen. But on the positive side, this job will also help reveal, reveal the true character of many people that you have gotten to know. It will be eye-opening. Pete, I think you've seen a lot of this in your short time here as well, and good luck to you. And fifth, the council will have to work as a team. In order to have a collaborative council, your mayor pro tem needs to be someone who best displays this quality. And I feel Sherri Lee is the best choice for this position. Let me wrap this up now. Would I have preferred to go out on my own terms? Sure, I certainly would have. Could I have been an asset to the town over the next four years? Definitely. Am I happy with my election results? No. But am I content? Yes, I am. I can now give my daughter the full attention she deserves during her high school senior year, as, and as we will be touring college campuses over the next few months as well. Many thanks to my wife, children, and family, my supporters throughout the years, and my very passionate supporters this past campaign. I might not be sitting up here, but I will remain a presence around town and online. My Holly Springs Watch blog and Facebook page will continue while I still have that passion. Thank you all. It's been a great 16 years serving you. We live in a great town. This is my home, and I hope it continues to be great and a place that we can all be proud of. Again, thank you so much.
All right, now, traditionally, there are huge gifts for those leaving us, at least for now, maybe not for later. And Joni and I are going to ask the two gentlemen to come down, am I correct? And we will have some things to present of immense value.
Somebody got a rag, I need to polish this up a little bit. Okay. Some of them are kind of small, but this is a vase, it's an Onyx vase. Doesn't it look manly?
Real manly, yes.
And we had it inscribed, and I'd like to read the inscription because it's very meaningful to these two gentlemen. I've known these guys for 20 years, and they are the most, they have the most integrity of anybody I know. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. We had it inscribed, "A leader stands out by the nature of one's commitment and the integrity of one's character." And these two gentlemen exemplify leadership. This is for Councilman Hank Dixon, for your dedication to the town of Holly Springs, 1997 to 2009, and 2013 to 2017.
Don't look at, don't look at faith, and you'll be okay. Just don't look at faith.
I have the same inscription on Jimmy Cobb's face. He served us from, he dedicated his life to us from 2009 to 2017. Thank you, buddy. Then...
Now, what's next, Joni?
I want to introduce to you our public works director. His department is in charge of fixing everything in town that breaks. And one of the, and one of the things that they are really good about is doing our street signs. And he has a really special thing for both of these guys. I want to let, let you unveil them.
Yep. Before I presented, Councilman Wumble, I was crossing the street the other day, carrying this just like this. And someone almost read me down. I assumed that they thought they were doing a public service, maybe they thought I had a rifle. So, yeah. So the first sign is for Councilman Dixon. And what it reads, it is Hank Dixon Way. And because he served two terms, 97 to 09, and again from 13 to 17. So what I want to do, I want to present this to you. I appreciate all that you have done, and you don't realize the support that you gave me. And I thank you.
Thank you.
I want one.
Not now.
What else?
Okay.
Another one.
This one is for Councilman Jimmy Cobb, and it's Jimmy Cobb Crossing. And again, his block range is 2009 to 2017. And again, I appreciate the support that you gave me. Advice, I mean, always willing to, to, to just step in and, and, and just give you encouragement, and I appreciate that.
Not half as much as I appreciate you. As I leave, I'd like to say one thing. They're leaving, and in my opinion, my strong opinion, they can hold their heads up high because they've done a great job for this town. And all, I repeat, all of its citizens. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck to you. God bless. Come back and see us. I'm not going to tell you what I just saw, never mind. We ready? Gen 8A, the organizational meeting, oaths of office. And again, our wonderful town clerk, Joni Powell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is my honor and privilege tonight to administer the oath of office to our incoming council members and the mayor. This is in accordance with North Carolina Constitution, Article, I need my glasses, six, section seven. All public officials in the state of North Carolina must swear to this oath. Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
Would my wife please join us, my wonderful wife? I've been holding all my signs, worked too hard on my campaign.
Good. They have chosen to use their family Bible for this oath, honey? Thank you, Molly. All right, if you will, Mayor, if you would place your right hand on the Bible. Lift your left hand toward heaven. That's what it says in the Constitution, actually. It is, yeah. Repeat each phrase after me. I, Richard Sears, do solemnly swear...
I, Richard Sears, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
They don't want to hear you, huh? The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
That are not consistent therewith.
That are not consistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of my office as mayor.
The duties of my office as mayor.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Councilwoman-elect Christine Kelly, would you come forward, please, and bring your family if you like?
I've got to get out of the way of pictures here.
I have to send my son to come, too.
Okay.
Do I want him to hold the Bible for you?
It's okay.
Yeah. Place your right hand on the Bible. Lift your left hand toward heaven. And repeat each phrase after me.
All right, thank you.
I, Christine Kelly, do solemnly swear...
I, Christine Kelly, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office...
As a council member.
As a council member.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We're doing it now. I'm trying to. That would go down to the... This is a difficult process, you know.
Yeah, just bring them all to the center.
Yeah, yours is right there. That's good. Tom next, yeah. Okay. Yep, go ahead. I think we're ready.
Councilman-elect Dan Berry.
Okay.
She couldn't get out of a baby class, so here we are.
Got to learn how to breathe, right? Daniel Berry, do solemnly swear...
I, Daniel Berry, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of my office as a council member.
The duties of my office as a council member.
For the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
For the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Dan.
He can come in.
Sure, you can come in. Yeah.
Pete's going to get out.
I squeeze.
Councilman Pete Villicson. Hold on. Place your right hand. Raise your left hand. Repeat each phrase. I, Pete Villicson, do solemnly swear...
I, Peter Villicson, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of my office as a council member.
The duties of my office as a council member.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Now, again, welcome to each of you. I had a great speech, all figured out as far as my personal recommendations and expectations. But after Jimmy and Hank said what they did, I can't top that. So I would say what they said to us as a team, that is perfect as far as expectations from our town and for our citizens. With that, we have a job. Agenda items 8C, organizational meeting, election of mayor pro tem. In case you don't know, and I think you all do, in case of the absence or disability of the mayor, the mayor pro tem shall act as mayor during the continuance of the absence or disability. I'm not planning on doing that, but since the mayor pro tem may be called upon to preside during council meetings, the position commonly is bestowed upon a senior council member. What we did was ask each and every member coming in their recommendations or nominations for each position. As of last night, the only one I had, and I'm sure there can be more, and we're going to do this each time we have a position open, was Sherri Lee. Personally, I think that'd be a great choice for the council and a great choice for the town, but at this point in time, is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Councilman O'Brien.
Councilman O'Brien? Anybody else? Seeing none. At this point in time, we'll vote all in favor of Sherri Lee. Please raise your hands so I can count. Uno, dos, two. Tom O'Brien. Three. All right. Welcome, Tom, to mayor pro tem. And Sherri, thank you. Tom, do you wish to make any comments?
No. Excited to work together as a team here and to move forward for the better of Holly Springs.
Okay, thank you. Now the nitty-gritty. But all these are very important, and we go to, first of all, the representative from Triangle J. I have two members who said they were interested, Pete or Dan. Anybody else? Seeing none? All in favor of Pete? One, two, three, four. Done. It would be Pete. Alternate would be Sherri or Dan, same issue. All in favor of Sherri? Uno, dos. All right, that's easy. So the two members of Triangle J would be Pete and Sherri. Congratulations to both of you, and thank you. And again, if you have anything you wish to say, just say, stop for a second, let me, let me speak, okay? You're all welcome to do that. TAC Campo, this is a five-county unit that I personally am the current chair of three years. They changed the bylaws just for me, but it's also just for Holly Springs. And it's helped us immensely, I think, with working with DOT. And I'm the only one that's signed up so far. And the alternate was Christine. Others?
You agree with that?
Well, I'm only using what I got, right?
That's it?
Only what people signed up for.
Yes.
If there's no others, then I would say, all in favor of me, please raise your hand. Thank you. And all in favor of Christine as alternate, please raise your hand. No others. Okay, thank you. And now from our busy, busy, busy park and rec department, representative that's signed up for this was Sherri, and alternate was Tom. Is there any others? Seeing none, then we have Sherri as the representative and alternate is Tom. Thank you. Now the technical review committee representatives. Now we have three for this one. Dan, Pete, and Tom, with alternates Dan and Tom, which you could vote for yourself twice. That's okay with me. So we have three people, Dan, Pete, and Tom. All in favor of Dan, please raise your hand. Two, three, four. Done. So we have Dan as the representative. Alternate, Dan or Tom? Whoop, not Dan. It's got to be Tom. Anybody else that wants to be on the alternate team? So we have Tom. Good enough? Consensus? Got it. Tom, let's hear it for this wonderful person. Now, once a year, sometimes more than that, we do grants for various people who come to us for grant money. And we need two people, right? That's right. We can do three if you want. Want to do three? That's fine with me. All right, so we have Sherri, Dan, and we need somebody else for nominations.
Peter.
Peter. Okay. Sherri, Dan, and Peter. Shall we just say all in favor of those three?
Yep.
That good?
Yep.
Consensus? Done. Sherri, Dan, and Peter for the civic grant program. Thank you. Sometimes I feel like a football player out on the field going like this. And last but not least, Transit Planning Advisory Committee, we need one. Representatives now, Tom and Christine, or Christine, unless there's any others? No others? How many for Tom? How many for Christine? All right. Say it again. How many for Tom? One, two, three. And for Christine? Two. Tom? Congratulations, Tom. Now, just for the record, all the other appointments are appointments, and they will be done via appointment, usually in the staff area. And I do want to bring to the attention of all of us here, we have a Triangle Smart Growth that we used to have. We don't have anymore. TCC, we have the vice chair in our audience tonight, and this has helped Holly Springs also. The vice chair at Campo MPO is, is pretty much like the planning board. I guess it's as close as we can come. And they have a lot of authority. They do a lot of work prior to our meeting, which I chair. And that would be Kendra and Aaron Levitt, which is fine. Then we go to the mayor's ad hoc committee, Boeing and Schools, which we've, keep getting calls, and I got to tell you, Boeing is not even close to being resolved. But Tony Perna is the new president or chair, whatever. And I haven't told him yet, but he'll be happy to find this out. So that'd be Tony Perna. Then the Chamber of Commerce will, will nominate and work for a representative, and right now it happens to be Daniel Weeks. And then last but not least, that is it. So that's the story on that, and we are done with the appointments for next year. Thank you very much for all of your cooperation. Agenda item 8E is organizational meeting, adopt the calendar year 2018 schedule of regular meetings, and I think you've all seen and had a chance to look at it. Joni, do you want to cover any bases on this?
No, sir. It's just a simple motion. I don't think, I think there is a July 2nd council meeting. Is that in the...
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
I didn't know if you wanted to adjust that for vacation schedules on the 4th, or I think we'd be prepared to have a meeting that night, but it's up to the council.
Agree, Mr. Manager?
Is the 4th on a Wednesday this year? Or next year, I guess.
I think it is. I believe it is. I want to say the 3rd is the Tuesday.
The 3rd is Tuesday.
Traditionally, we have, we have opted off for that meeting.
Correct.
Any problems with that as a decision?
No.
No.
Okay, we're off.
Off for the 3rd.
Please.
Off for the 3rd. It makes a difference in the development review schedule.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we need to, to decide on tonight on this?
No, sir.
That's it?
Just a motion.
Okay, good enough? Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion to...
To adopt the calendar with the cancellation of the July 3rd meeting.
I make the motion to adopt the town council meeting calendar with the exception of the July 3rd meeting.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, 8F, organizational meeting. This is a 2018 retreat. And just for the, for the record, we've tried a lot of different options for a retreat. We've tried it there. We've tried it here. We've tried it everywhere. My personal recommendation, personal recommendation is talking to me, is that we continue to go to Pine Needles. It's not real fancy, but it's very adequate for us on time. And that's just me talking, but anybody else who has a thought, please make it aware now. Good with Pine Needles?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I'm good.
And the reason I said that is, is when we tried it here and when we tried it close to here, and I'm not being demeaning, but the phones rang all the time, and it wasn't perfect. So I think this is a wise decision on all over parts. And it gets us out of town a bit. All right. So, do we need a motion?
Sort of zero in on a date.
Oh, yeah.
The winter rates are still good on February 2nd, 3rd. That's a Friday and Saturday.
Right.
And February 9th and 10th. After that, they're booked.
It's problematical, right?
It's, well, they're booked.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
A lot more in the end of February and March. The date, the rate's kind of doubled, so we don't want to do that. Because all of a sudden, all the golfers are there, so...
That's right. There's still some that might be there anyway. Is there a date in there that works best for everybody? What would you say?
Either one's good.
Either the 2nd, 3rd, or 9, 10?
Yeah.
Reference?
Yeah, weekend. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
I prefer the later one.
Okay.
Only because of a, a family event, so my attendance will be...
Sure. So February 9th and 10th is the two favored, I guess. Are we good on that? Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Consensus?
Okay.
Okay? Anything else on this one? No? Apparently not.
No, sir. Nothing else.
Okay. 9A, new business, OFM Building Edition, Matt Beard. Hi, Matt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so for your first planning case as a new council, we've got a major amendment for the OFM building located at the end of Tradition Trail out in our business park. The proposal is to increase the amount of office space within the existing structure by utilizing a second story. So they're not really losing any existing warehouse space, but instead they're gaining office space. And to deal with the increased parking demand of those new offices and employees, they've proposed a 78 parking space lot off the, the rear. So this is the loading, loading dock. So it's kind of behind the building, really the only place where they could put a 78 space parking lot on the site. Along with the, I'm not supposed to point down here. So along with the proposed major amendment, they've requested two waivers, the first of which is to exceed the required parking amount. In an effort to reduce unnecessary impervious cover around town, we limit the amount of parking that you are allowed to do to a maximum. So with a waiver, they can go up... So with a waiver, they can go up to 150% of the parking requirement. With this, they're going up to 135% of the requirement. And the applicant is here, and they'll be able to kind of walk you through the plan as to why this makes sense for them. So the other waiver is a waiver of pedestrian circulation. This section of our code speaks to kind of safe travel from the entry points to, from buildings to all of the parking lots on a site. So the waiver is being requested to provide the walkway going from the parking area to a rear entrance here on the side of the loading docks, rather than, and I'm gonna jump back for a second, rather than bringing it all the way down here and connecting up with the sidewalk system that connects to the front entry. The building plans, site plans, have complied with all of our requirements, except for the requested waivers. The Planning Board recommended approval. They had a number of questions for the applicant that you'll be able to cover this evening with them. Walking through that the UDO is clear about maintaining access from front doors to all parking areas. They had questions about the location of the proposed new office space within the building, and whether or not the new parking would be serving the office space or warehouse jobs. As well, there was a question about whether vehicular access across the loading area would be safe. And what happens if OFM switches to multiple tenants whereby the rear parking area may be serving one tenant and not the other. So in addition to those topics, they proposed a change to the motion for the pedestrian circulation waiver to add the stipulation that all office spaces are utilized by only OFM employees. And following that meeting, we reviewed and as staff have proposed that this be changed from referencing OFM as the business name to just primary tenant. So if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, the applicant is present.
Questions now for Matt?
Nope.
Are you cutting dry? The applicant is here, and would you mind coming up and...
Yep.
Covering some of the questions that we may have? How are you doing?
Hi, good evening. Welcome new council members. My name is Kara Zalkberg Hilton. I am the owner of the building at 161 Tradition Trail. The building has been there for about 10 years now with OFM as its single-use tenant. The reason for the infrastructure improvement is, as you see on your screen, allowing OFM to expand and keep its operations in Holly Springs without movement to other local municipalities. With the addition of this parking, OFM can continue to hire employees and maximize its operations within the current facility. It is our goal to continue to provide improvements to the OFM Building and its infrastructure to ensure that OFM continues to operate in Holly Springs. OFM's parent company is HNI. They are based out of Iowa. They are the largest manufacturer of office furniture in the world. It is our duty to continue to help them, to give them the space that they need to expand to stay in Holly Springs. To give you some anecdotal pieces, two years ago, there were 42 employees at OFM. Today, there are 81, and they will be over 120 by this time next year. So it is fantastic growth, and it's something we want to continue to keep here. Additionally, before, in 2007, OFM was the largest building in Holly Springs before Walmart came in. So it's only natural for it to need different kinds of infrastructure improvements as time goes on. With respect to waiver, the first waiver, the where the office space was additionally constructed, which is why there is no change to the entirety of the square footage, where you see this purple block is where the existing office space was. There was a mezzanine that was constructed during initial construction of the building, and that mezzanine was then completed. So it gave double the space for the offices. So that is how the square footage is not affected, basically, otherwise. The mathematics certainly don't make sense. So the second level above the initial office space was completing, which allowed for the hiring of up to the 50 additional employees that I just mentioned. OFM has now increased its reach with respect to where it's delivering and how many facilities that they have where they're shipping out of, which has also increased their warehouse staff, which is the need for the additional employees for 12 months from now. The area where they have added the offices connects through a staircase to the main entrance. The main entrance is sort of here below this, the arrow, for lack of a better word. The office employees will park in this main lot while we anticipate the warehouse employees parking in the lot behind the warehouse. With respect to waiver number two, the visitor and employee access would remain at the front door. All handicapped access does remain at the front door. We are not seeking to put anyone to have to walk that far to any access. The new parking plan includes a walkway which is completely outside of the truck circulation to an existing employee entrance, which has been there since the day that the building was erected, that satisfies the intent of the requirement, understanding it is not a front door, but it is absolutely an employee access door that has been there since the building was constructed. The planned circulation will prevent any undue congestion as the warehouse employees do arrive prior to trucks arriving in the morning. The warehouse employees are there at least an hour prior to that, and we don't anticipate any issues. In addition, if we were to construct the sidewalk to the front door, that would actually be putting people in harm's way. We'd have to go have them walking completely where the trucks are coming in, and we just didn't feel that made sense. So we're trying to utilize an entrance where the warehouse workers are going anyway in order to give them better access. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions or comments to the discussion? All good?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Well, Matt? Cover with us just the top drawers of the comments made by the Planning Board. Can I put it all together for us? 801, et cetera? Anything else on discussion on this particular issue?
And Dan, you were there, so if I missed anything, please speak up.
No, I think the applicant spoke to most of these. I'm glad we covered that. Would've been good with the planning board meeting, but I'm glad we covered it off here.
Anything else? Okay, let's... A motion, Joni, please? There should be three, which is typical.
I'll make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for 17-WAV-24 and 32 in association with OFM Development Plan Addendum. Second Amendment.
Motion been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number two?
Having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to approve waivers requested in association with development plan amendment for OFM as follows. 17-WAV-24 to allow 135% of the required parking, and 17-WAV-32 to not be required to provide a sidewalk from the additional parking area to the front door.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number three of three.
Motion to approve Development Plan Number 05-DP-02-A04 for OFM Building Edition with conditions listed in Agenda packets.
There's a second? I'm sorry. I missed it, okay? Thank you. Motion been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Agenda Item 9B, new business. The Utley Creek Greenway Connection Project, Dirk Seebendroth. How are you, Dirk?
Alright. Good evening, Mayor Sears. Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening, Dirk.
Tonight, I would like to present to you the Utley Creek Greenway Project. The Utley Creek Greenway Project starts on, or would start, on West Ballantyne Street near the Oaks of Avon Acres Clubhouse, and would utilize existing greenway sections already existing in the Ballanridge neighborhood. Then would cross under NC-55 via an already existing tunnel, and then continue along NC-55 to the Avon Ferry Road near the NC-55 bypass. In total, about 3,700 linear feet of new greenway would get constructed. What, once completed, this new greenway would be an important pedestrian and bicycle connection between the east side and the west side of town. There's some pictures. So that's what I just mentioned. If you would be, just to orient yourself, on West Ballantyne Street near the Oaks of Avon Acres Clubhouse, I kinda sketched it in here. So this greenway would start here, would continue and tie into an existing greenway already present in the Ballanridge neighborhood. Here, it crosses the Chilmark Ridge Drive. This is the other direction. This would continue facing south. And here, it shows a picture of it ending near the Avon Ferry Road near the NC-55 bypass. Go back to the overview. So north of NC-55, land has already been set aside by the Ballanridge and Avon Acres HOAs. After it crossed under the NC-55 bypass, some additional right-of-way easements need to be purchased from private property owners and HOAs south of NC-55. We will receive federal funds for this project from the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program Fund, short CMAC. Therefore, the consultant, the consultant was chosen via a selection process required by NCDOT. I'm here tonight to request funds for the design contract, which would include Weatherall Engineering for the design, survey, water resources, soil and erosion design, and geotechnical services. They would partner with Carolina Ecosystem for the environmental investigation, and they would partner with Professional Property Services for the right-of-way and easement So again, we are proposing to award the contract to Weatherall Engineering for $243,292.96 and approve the project budget, and $195,500 in funding inclusive of contingency. The remaining $60,000 will be funded by NCDOT as a reimbursement. I welcome Mr. Weatherall and Mr. Heffner with Weatherall Engineering tonight. They are also present, and I'm also here. If you have any questions, comments, please let me know.
Questions or comments at this point?
Uh-uh.
Oh, sorry.
You saw this last time? Was that the front planning board last time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it wasn't in action for us, but we Parks and Rec Committee did an overview, and this project was one of the things they discussed with the planning board.
If there's no further questions or comments, does anybody wanna speak to the applicant or Weatherall? No? We're good? 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 Let's hit the motion.
I'll make the motion to retain Weatherall Engineering Incorporated for $243,292.96 and approve a project budget and $195,500 in funding inclusive of contingency.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Dirk.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Town Council. Thank you very much.
Item number 10 is other business, and I think everybody knows what this is and how it works. I always talk about crosswalk safety, but I learned another reason why I do that. Sometimes it's things you learn after the fact. In a presentation, I guess we call it, North Carolina has a very dubious honor, and that is there's more pedestrian deaths in this state than any other state in the country. I find that incredibly surprising, but also incredibly terrible. So we talk about crosswalk safety. I think Hammond already mentioned that the needs for lights, I think we'll look into that for sure. I continue to say I think we're getting a little better, but we're not there, of course. And I still yell sometimes out front when I'm walking across the street, and one side stops and one side doesn't, and that's not a good thing. So I just wanna remind everybody that crosswalk safety is a very important issue, as are the lights that we're gonna talk about later on. We'll get some information from Kendra or whomever. And to be number one in the country is a good thing, except in this case, it's a bad thing. So, again, I didn't know this until this particular presentation. Again, I welcome the new board, and I have nothing else for other business. It's wide open. Anybody else?
This weekend, we got the parade on Saturday. Friday night, we've got the tree lighting.
Yep.
And it's supposed to be a little chilly with potential snowflakes, I think, for big weather. But come on down, should be a good time.
During the Christmas parade, just to add a point, there will be three floats that we are managing, I guess, here. One will be the float that we all ride on. Secondly, will be the float for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board, which will be behind us. And we have another float, since Joni found some extra floats for us, for the anti-bullying team, which will be also another float. So we're kinda proud to have all three on a float this year, and thank you, Joni, for your help. What else?
Week from Saturday is the Stugley Sweater 5K. Right, Tom?
Great, yep.
Yep. It's always a super fun event, so please come out.
We're actually gonna have snow there.
Heard.
Yeah, there'll be two trails for...
You may not need artificial snow.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Aye. Who else?
Only thing I had, the school board was meeting tonight about the assignment for Buckhorn Creek Elementary. I haven't heard how that went yet, but it was either gonna get maybe tabled, there was discussion, or they were gonna vote on it, but there was a very passionate group of residents in Holly Springs advocating for their children, how that school was gonna be assigned on what calendar. So kudos to them for doing what was right for their families and sticking up for them.
Been a lot of people involved in that, and I know our message got through. I'm not saying that it's gonna happen or not happen, but the message is clear. I was very pleased to have some return information on email from some of the school board members that we talked about, as you all were a part of this. So let's keep our fingers crossed. Anything else? All good?
Yep.
Managers report.
Yes, sir. I've got a few things. First of all, next Wednesday, the 13th, we have the Employee Christmas Holiday Lunch, and each of you are invited to attend.
Yep.
I believe that's at the Hunt Center.
Center.
Yeah, it'll be there. Good event. So hopefully you can make it there. We were recognized, and I shared this today with, hit email Town Council and administrative staff, and it may not have gotten to two of our newly-elected council members, and if it didn't get to you, I apologize, but Safe Homes, or safehome.org has identified Holly Springs as the safest city in North Carolina with a population of over 28,000. So I think that's pretty...
Once again?
That's really great. It's not something we wanna take for granted. Fortunately, we've been able to receive these types of accolades in the past, and I don't ever get tired of saying it, but I'd like to thank our police department and its leadership, and also all of the members in the community and the support for the police department, because it's really a group effort. So something we can be very proud of, absolutely. Also, wanted to thank, and some of our staff members were here earlier tonight and they left, but that audit report, and I know we had a lot going on the night, it was a very, very good report. It's not something that I ever want us to take for granted, but it's really due to the efforts of the representatives of all of those departments and folks that work within those departments to make sure that we are in compliance. And it's also really due to the fantastic work of our finance department. I think a couple members are there, and there's Mary Hogan.
Mary Soder.
Was Patty here? I think she was here earlier, but... I think she was here earlier, but they just do a fantastic job and wanted to certainly not miss the opportunity to say thank you to them for that. And let's see, do I have anything else?
Where can they find the audit report?
It'll be online tomorrow.
It'll be online tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, there's questions?
I know, I did make a note of this, but I wanted to say a special thank you to each of our incoming council members. Thank you for taking the time to sit down and meet with staff. We shared with the new members our financial reports and talked some about projects, and just really felt like, I felt like we had very productive meetings moving forward, and I appreciate your time, and also met with Councilman Villas, and we'd had that meeting before, but we met again last Friday and just talked about steps moving forward. So I think staff's really excited about working in the direction moving forward. I think this retreat is going to be a particularly important one. We've got a number of very important issues that we'll be talking about that'll shape our community for years to come. We've got a lot to do.
Thanks, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, by way of background for the new members, there are, there is a need for a closed session tonight to discuss, and general statutes only allow us to go in a closed session for a limited number of purposes, about 10 different reasons, and temporary degrees, and certain things. But this particular one, I'm going to ask for some authority to purchase some property, and if you were to give it and we were to enter into a sales contract with the owner of the property, then it would later than, that sales contract would become public record. So it's only a matter of secrecy for a little while until we get contract negotiations in place.
I'll bet there's a number on that, right?
So to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A5.
He's usually right, too, that's what kills them.
To give, talk about authority for some real estate contractual matters.
That it? Need a motion?
I'll make the motion for a closed session pursuant to that statute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Have a good evening. Thank you.